Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Council meeting. We have one, two, three, four first readings and one pending legislation tonight. We'll begin with our first reading, Resolution Number 22R53. Mr. Cotts.
Thank you. We will open Finance Committee meeting at six o'clock, starting out with Resolution 22R53, Resolution, Amending Resolution 22R38 by delaying the purchase of a police cruiser and declaring an emergency. So, back on July 6th, we passed Resolution going through R38 for a police cruiser to replace a total police cruiser. So now we're being advised that we're not going to be able to see this until 2023. Does the price stay the same? Does the, all the terms traded in value, all that stuff stay the same?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And do we have any idea when in 2023?
No, we do not. Your production from Ford is, it fluctuates, comes and goes.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, have we already PO'd this, this purchase?
No, we haven't yet.
Would it be good to PO it this year? And that way, that money's already encumbered in this budget because that's what it's been for?
Well, that's the reason why we're delaying it because we didn't want to encumber it for this year. Since we can, since it's not going to be purchased until next year, we could actually put it on the budget for next year and not encumber it. That was kind of the idea, not just delaying it.
And then the next resolution kind of explains how those funds are going to be allocated in this year's budget, which is a beautiful thing to give a story. I can tell you from a equipment standpoint, Freightliner, Peterbilt, all of them, everybody's having the same problem. They say they're going to produce something and then something happens, all of a sudden. You don't usually get to late two or three weeks, you get to late six months. It's pretty crazy right now.
So we don't want to see anything else come back to us on the purchase of this vehicle?
Not this year.
No, no.
No, because it's already okay, but it's just delayed until the following year.
The only thing that happened is they say we can't deliver at all.
Yes.
So there's that possibility.
When I talked to Montrose on if they can get, if it gets a build date before the end of the year, everything does stay the same. The deadline for the 2023 orders has already been canceled, you know, has already come to its past date. And he is unsure if they're going to squash the rest of the orders for the rest of this year. So it's possible that it would go into next year for next year's pricing, but he doesn't think so.
So then at that point, we may see come back with...
Correct, but we don't, we don't have a definitive whether they're going to cancel the rest of the 2022 order.
Correct, but we don't, we don't have... Oh, we have an echo. Any other questions, comments? Comfortable weighing the three on this? We will ask to weigh the three on this reading. Our next resolution is 22R54, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase two police cruisers and declaring an emergency. This is the purchase from Suma Health, two used 2017 Ford police interceptor utilities vehicles at a total cost of $27,000. I understand there's a story.
Well, and they're fully equipped and, yeah, in the sense, we added additional school resource officer and the vehicle that was totaled was a school resource officer vehicle. So we had ones that were coming that we could use for that, but we did want to pick up another one if we were able to. And the, our police department, Chief Vickett and Captain Criner, I'm gonna tell part of your story, you can tell the rest. Happened to come across a advertising, I'll call it, from Suma that they were moving a couple of their vehicles, some of their vehicles, just a regular cycle of replacement of vehicles. And these two were available to any law enforcement agency that might be interested. And our guys got right on it and got first in line. And went down and looked at them while that Captain Criner told the rest. And they actually even got a price reduction on that. So, and these are Suma vehicles that they haven't ridden hard and they've been well maintained, so.
Yeah, there was no, no mechanical, major mechanical problems with them. They're very clean, very good shape for being a 2017, lower mileage. One has 77,000, one has 82,000. They're very clean, fully equipped. The only thing we would have to do is put radios in them and we already have radios to put in them. So we're not going to have to pay the cost to outfit them with lights, sirens, all that other.
The expectation is these are vehicles, you ought to be able to get 200,000 miles and they won't be used in our normal rotation here either.
Say they will.
They will not. They'll be used by our resource officers, so they're going to get less, less use here, less mileage on a regular basis. These things ought to serve us well for several years. A great price for two vehicles when you can't get a vehicle.
They'll be there.
And the previous one, those tools was a DARE, is that correct?
One of them, yes. Oh, yeah, one of them, that's correct.
So we've received the money from the insurance on that?
Yes.
How much should we, I mean, so that comes off, so the 27,000 we're paying for the vehicles without a quote of purchasing now, how much should we get from the insurance on a year-end mortgage?
Yeah, I think it might be on the last one.
So the net cost on this is 12,000.
They were originally wanting 15 for each. We had gotten them for 13.5 each.
And what would you expect, the life expectancy of these to be? Would be a year, two, four, six years?
I would say at least five to six.
All right.
Anybody else? So these units are coming from Suma Health, they're black and white units versus all of our white units. Are we doing, are we staying with the black and white theme for them or?
Well, the white on there was, it was a wrap. We're taking the wrap off and since we want to do more of a school theme, so we're going to leave them black and have, have it lettered with the DARE emblems and incorporate more for the schools since they are going to be school resource.
Okay, hearts. All right, super. On April 6th, we approved Resolution 22R19 to purchase two cars. Have we received those cars yet?
The build date on those two are October 13th and we will have them within a month from that. I did, Montrose, those two are still on schedule.
All right. And one of them was white and one is black. Are we staying with, and the one black one was supposed to be for a DARE vehicle. Are we able to change that to white or?
We cannot change that. That deadline has already passed by over a month. We can wrap it white though.
Okay. Questions, comments?
What is the cost to wrap it?
What is the cost to wrap it?
Graphic accents gave me an original price of 3,400. He is going, the owner was out of town. He is going to get with him to see if he can get us a better deal on that.
3,400 more, 3,400 more than the cost of our decal itself?
Yes.
Over the above?
Yes.
I don't know if we have anything in policy that says they have to be white. Is there a reason not to just leave it black?
I agree.
Why you think you should leave it black and?
Well, I think consistency is nice, but, yeah, and I think that's up to the police department, what they like to do. I think we should just leave it up to them. White, but.
There's a notion that that's what the public, and you can speak to it more, that's what the public used to see. You got that, you know, every now and then you get that fake cop stop. You know, somebody gets stopped by a cruiser that's black, we don't have black cruisers, we've got white cruisers. There's that look, there's that element, I guess, is, you know, beyond, we can get just uniformly.
So I'd probably definitely have it black.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, anything else? Comfortable weighing the three on this purchase of two units for the low, low, low price of $27,000? All right, we'll also weigh the three on this. Close the Finance Committee meeting at 6:09.
Our next resolution is Resolution Number 22R55, and since Andy isn't here, okay, please.
Now we'll open Community Development Committee at 6:12. We have Resolution 22R55, which is Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Enter Into An Agreement With Data Force For Printing, Mailing, and Tabulation of the Community Survey, Component of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Declaring an Emergency. This has been talked about now. We went through the three with basically the same exact thing, but didn't have the detail of the exact contract. Now we have the exact contract, the exact standard that Mr. Carter nailed down. I also sent everybody to the other bid, you know, everybody on the steering committee and our survey committee felt confident that both were capable, but data force was the preferred. And the total cost of 17 is within the attached records.
17,288.
17,288. Yeah, 17,288, 32.
The postage, the postage has to be prepaid, that's another $5,000?
Nope, that's all in. That's, that would be the, the option were to add a postcard, a follow-up postcard and a postage for that postcard, so put that up. The only possible thing, Mr. Carter could elaborate if I'm wrong here. We did this based on a 30% response rate by mail, which we think is very high.
Yes.
30% response rate before, before we had the online option. So, you know, the return envelopes come back and we get 40% that come back, well, there could be an adjustment. We think that's highly, highly unlikely because we have the online.
Yeah, I think when we talked about it, we left it at the 30% thinking that was going to be high to add kind of a buffer in there because the returns, part of that is based on what postage they pay actually out for the returns.
Any questions? We're gonna ask to weigh the three?
I do have a few questions. Mr. Commonwealth, do we have a Steering Committee approved survey? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The Steering Committee has approved a survey?
Yes.
And do we have access to that survey?
We, yes.
I haven't seen it.
I thought you saw it.
I have not seen a final copy.
Yeah, okay. So Bogmeyer's doing the final copy, not us.
Okay, but?
So Bogmeyer will be the ones that would have to produce the final exact. You know, there was debate, there was discussion about having the extra page for the map. Couple different layout options that they, they kind of coordinate. And once we've got this approved, then everything can move forward. It should move forward pretty quickly, I think, I think.
Okay. So, so you're saying that the survey is done and complete and no more changes to the survey?
This was the last, this was the last step before we pushed to complete. But the final draft and the word, everything is ready to go regardless of what the outcome is, but we do have a survey.
Okay, thank you. So this bid is based on 5,800 packets and we have a little less than 5,600 households. So why, why do we need 200 more packets than need to be mailed out?
I believe it was for the people who wanted them, wanted more mail to them, or the people that wanted to come and pick them up. Go ahead.
I believe the intent also was the, it was the residential addresses and businesses.
Okay, that's the total. Where's, where did it go?
So the data collection part of this, you stated that it's based on a 30% return, which is what the type of return that we had 15, 18 million years ago, however long ago it was. And now with, with the online thing, do we really expect to receive 30 or 40% return on these surveys to be mailed back?
No, I just said that.
Well, you, you said that. It could be 40%. You didn't say it could be less.
No, I said it is expected to be significantly less.
Okay. So the, the price is, is, is going to change? Will we be paying less?
It will go down.
Correct.
But that's not stated anywhere on the bid. Do we have that in writing from them that that's going to happen?
Project cost may vary due to quantity differences right down on the.
Project, what?
It says project cost may vary due to quantity difference and the post, under postage, it says that it's based on the actual.
And that applies to all quantities on this bid?
Not all quantities because the printing portion of it is a fixed quantity and the mailing of that fixed portion is also a fixed quantity.
All right, thank you. So on the data collection, that's $3,120.60 based on the 30% thing, which seems pretty excessive. And a part of that is $150 for upload, complete data file once after close of the project. So is that $150 for an email?
Compiling the data, pulling all the final steps.
Program data collection template, receive forms, document preparation, scan the images, IRC intelligent program test. I don't understand what upload, complete data file once after close of the project is other than emailing it.
It's a merger of the data into a, into an Excel so we can create the graphs, correct?
Okay. And then a reminder postcard that we chose not to send out would be about $4,100 for the postcard and the postage as I'm seeing it here. So with that, we could actually send out four postcards. And one of the things that I've mentioned before and that has been mentioned numerous times is that it's important that we reach every citizen within New Franklin. And so because that's so important, we're only going to give it one shot. We're only going to try once to get ahold of them and send them this survey. So, gosh darn it, I hope they, they get it and they don't throw it away or it gets lost in the mail or anything like that because we're only going in one shot. I was approached after our last meeting with a suggestion that we, instead of mailing the survey out to everybody, we send a, a letter, an official letter from New Franklin that explains the survey, the purpose of the survey, how to do it, et cetera, include a QR code on that letter and include in that letter a postcard that they can send back if they wanted the paper survey mailed to them, which then, you know, would probably be a lot cheaper than sending the paper survey to every single household for them to go online and throw the survey away. If we were to do that, that would probably be a lot less than the 17,000 for this. And then we would be, have the opportunity with the extra money that we could send out reminder postcards with a place ads in newspapers. We could even put ads on, on the radio to let people know, to get the message out. There, there'd be money for all that as opposed to a one-time shot to get every resident in New Franklin. I don't agree with this and I think the cost is excessive for what we're trying to accomplish.
I don't believe the cost would come down as uniformly as dropping out the whole package because there are some line items that would stay the same. You're going to add printing, you're going to change the printing cost, but the envelope cost, packing, the initial where we're doing a postcard and including it in the packet. Some of that prep is going to stay the same. It would still be the initial mailing, postage out to the same households. It could be re-quoted, but I don't believe it's going to be as significant as just dropping out the, uh, down to the, just the cost of doing a postcard. We'd still have those printed. We'd still have them mailed. It would reduce the cost of the initial mailing, but it wouldn't. And, and that there is only in the $5,000 area of the bulk printing and envelope stuffing.
So it wouldn't be cheaper to send one letter versus eight pages in a packet? Okay. Well, we don't, we don't know. We're, we're guessing.
Well, the survey committee and the steering committee met, talked about this, discussed it, and then it was the survey that went out to the steering committee so the steering committee could get the options from Bogmeyer. And that's what they decided. The steering committee is the party that we, as the city, the selection committee chose.
To, to make recommendations to council, not to tell council what to do.
Just like a police department. We, we chose them to give us their, but this is the advice we give.
I understand.
Anything else?
I guess I'd look at it different. I would be willing to throw away four or five postcards before I threw away something that like, this looks interesting, maybe open it up. So most of the people that I've talked to like to have it in their hands. There are a lot of people that don't have a lot of experience on a computer because they just never grew up that way. They build things, they fix things. They're just, they're hardworking, blue collar people. I'm not saying blue collar people don't know how to run computers, but a lot of them, that's how they make their living and they like hands-on stuff. So to me personally, I like this. I would do it. A bunch of sending postcards back and forth and reminding people, if you want one, now we'll send it to you. I mean, to me, that's fine and I respect how you feel about it, but I have to say how I feel about it. So that's how I feel about it. I think this is a good setup and if I get a big pack and I'm going to be looking into it, if I get postcards, I know I'm probably telling them something that way because they just kind of look at it, you know, this is what I got. So that's just my opinion, but I respect your view. I get it. All right, thank you.
Any opposition to weighing the three on this? Okay. But for the good of the order, it's occurred to me while we were talking that we've got five council people here. This was fashioned as, as an emergency legislation so you can make, make it happen. That requires a two-thirds vote to make it effective tonight. And two-thirds pursuant to our charter is five votes. So if you don't have five votes tonight, you can still pass it with a majority, but it wouldn't be effective for 30 days. The other options would be if you chose to go to a second reading. I have no idea what Mr. Harker or Mr. Federin's point of view on this is, but if you went to a second reading and you had five votes, it would be effective then two weeks from now as opposed to 30 days from now. Crystal ball. I just wanted to be aware of that before you, before you vote. Well, the time, the time issue that we have with this is colliding with election mail. So we don't want this to show up in everybody's mailbox when they're already throwing files and stuff from the election.
It is a big package. I think people would be interested in opening it up to see what it is.
Well, that's not how we feel. So we feel that there would be a conflict and we would rather have it come right away prior to election or after the election. So I, I don't know if the two-week delay would cause, I don't know what, what the timeline was on the running. I don't, I.
There you go. I have these information there. They said, due to some supply chain issues, we highly recommend you place your order four to five weeks before your mailing needs to drop. This will reduce the risk of supply chain delays. So it could be 30 days if we vote tonight or it could be two weeks if we vote. Two weeks. So that's just beyond the room. That's, that's a possibility. Do whatever you want to do with it. I'm only going to vote on it tonight and if you don't, you're going to.
And your point about the election propaganda, that's, it's saying four to five weeks, so that's what it's.
So I'm just going to put it there. So we might as well wait and then we have the option. Once this passes, we can send it number one. So I would say we're probably at the point that we're going to have it like after the election anyway. I would say let's wait and vote in two weeks and then we have, you know, hopefully we get everybody here in two weeks. You still may not have or will two notes, but then just put you back two weeks. Yeah, yeah. Well, okay, I see what you're saying. So we can pass it now. We have 30 days. We can give them a heads up. They, you know, if they chose on their own to order the material, they could. You know, but it sounds like we're probably past election anyway. What do you guys think? Do you want to just go ahead and vote on it tonight?
I will, I will say that if you were to wait two weeks and try to pass that as an emergency, I would protest that because as you mentioned at the beginning of the year, things like this need to have the 30 days so citizens have comments or concerns that they would have the opportunity.
Well, in that case then we should vote on it tonight. Yeah, makes sense to me. All right. Anybody else have any comments, questions, passionate feeling? That's the last for the Community Development meeting, so Community Development closes at.
You have one, I'm sorry, you have one other one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not the community development guy, so.
It's pending.
So, yeah, all right, do we just have to keep, how do we do this? Do we? So as the committee, acting committee chair tonight, I just say, in this committee meeting.
You're the sponsor.
You're the sponsor.
It's going to get red, so.
Okay. During the meeting with the draw.
During the election. Yes.
So I'll go ahead and say this. Resolution 22R47, Community, uh, a resolution authorizing expenditure not to exceed $20,000 for printing, mailing, and tabulation of the community survey component of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and declaring an emergency. As just stated, we'd be withdrawing this because it's been replaced. That would be a fourth reading back then. Yeah, we're replacing that one. Any comments, questions, concerns? All right, Community Development closes at 6:26. I'm sorry, 28.
Our next resolution is Resolution 22R56. David?
All right, we're at Open Streets and Grange Committee. We call it 6:34, 33. And on piece of legislation, Resolution 22R against 56, a resolution authorizing Franklin to participate in the 2023 Ohio Department of Transportation, transportation, municipal bridge inspection program and declaring this an emergency. Been in this before, Paul, or is it basically?
We have and they, it hasn't always been without cost, but most recently it has been. And so they're extending that to include it against for another year in 2023. But they require the, the resolution approving that in the language that they suggest, which we incorporated into our standard form. So it's a great thing for us. Maybe the bridge inspections will not cost us.
Say thanks for that, man.
Anyhow, yeah, so if I have any questions, I'll ask for maybe three readings on this. All right, thank you. We'll close at, uh, 6:34 and a half.
Does anybody else have anything? We will call to order the New Franklin Regularly Scheduled Committee meeting at 6:30. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you be able to call for us?
Mr. Cotts?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Powell?
Here.
I'd ask for approval for the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting from September 7th.
Submove, second.
We have a first and a second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
And I'd ask for approval of financials for August 2022, subject to all.
Submove, second.
Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Does anyone in the, the audience have any comments they would like to make? No? Okay, we'll begin with our first reading, Resolution Number 22R53. Kelly?
A Resolution, Amending Resolution 22R38 by delaying the purchase of a police cruiser and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to weigh the three readings on Resolution 22R53.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R53.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes. Resolution Number 22R54, Kelly?
A Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Purchase Two Police Cruisers and Declaring an Emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to weigh the three readings on Resolution 22R54.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to the now resolution.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-two R fifty-four.
Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Motion passes five zero. Resolution number twenty-two R fifty-five.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with data force for printing, mailing, and tabulation of the community survey component of the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to community development committee, uh, and we are requesting to waive, I'm sorry, no, we asked for time on this one, so, wait, no, we're gonna pass it.
Do we need to amend it to remove the emergency language?
You don't have to amend it, no, no, okay. So, we are asking to waive the three on this.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We ask to approve Resolution twenty-two R fifty-five.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Resolution... Oh, four one, I'm sorry. Who taught me to count? Oh, I went to Manchester, so we don't say that. Do some Manchester people here, we're gonna rain you out to get out of there. Here, both are good ones. Resolution number twenty-two R fifty-six.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the two thousand twenty-three Ohio Department of Transportation Municipal Bridge Inspection Program and declaring this an emergency.
This was, uh, discussing the Streets and Drains Committee, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution, uh, man, twenty-two R fifty-six.
Second.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. And our last resolution is Resolution number twenty-two R forty-seven.
A resolution authorizing an expenditure not to exceed twenty thousand for printing, mailing, and tabulation of the community survey component of the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the community development committee and we ask to rescind, withdraw, withdraw this resolution.
You okay with that? I'm gonna say okay.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, David, thank you, it's okay then. Do I tell Kelly? Or do I just say it's okay?
The boss.
No, I was asking, honestly, I wasn't sure.
You need to make an official statement.
Just say that it's been withdrawn.
Okay, it's been withdrawn. Now, our favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's report, the short mayor's report, right?
Yeah, that's kind.
Or the mayor's short report.
That's actually, yeah, right, yeah. I'll mayor's short report. Um, tennis courts will be finished soon. Uh, if you haven't been up, take a look, uh, most of the fencing is up, uh, they'll be doing the paintings as soon as weather permits, um, pretty close to, right about Halloween, the beginning of October. We, uh, we're, we're in the, we're planning our grand opening, we've got a variety of different ideas, but we're gonna try to make a big deal out of it, this is a big one.
Yeah.
And, um, I appreciate all the support, people are really excited in the community for it, uh, and it's a good look up there, so, uh, we will keep everybody well advised and the press well advised when that's gonna be. Uh, try to have some exhibition matches up there, so if I have any volunteers who want to be involved, please let us know. Uh, all right. Um, speaking of parks, Real Park, uh, as we mentioned before, the Parks Commission went out, met with the residents from Real Park, and, uh, they were, they had a lot of great ideas the residents did, we had a good turnout, uh, and there were some little things and there were some big things, and a lot of the little things were taken care of right away, there were, and there were some areas that were a little dangerous with the, uh, just the landscaping that had been improved, uh, they needed tetherball, tetherball has not done well, unfortunately, we put tetherballs up there, they disappeared. Uh, it's sad, it's, yeah, imagine that.
Somebody's really good one.
Yeah. Uh, but one of the things that was important then was the, uh, Norton Baseball uses that for their, uh, for their coach pitch teams, and they have two fields up there and, and we've, uh, been helpful in terms of manicure and everything, et cetera, uh, but they, they have never had fences in front of the dugouts, uh, and there's just dirt in front of the dugouts, which turns into mud, which, you know, five and six years old turns into what you might expect. Uh, so they asked if we could get some gravel and put some, uh, fences, those are up, the gravel's in, the fences are up, and one of the backstops needed some significant work, um, all to the tune of about seven thousand dollars. It's all, uh, done, uh, and it all got done in about three weeks, uh, so the Parks Commission last evening, Jason Witchy, who is, uh, with Norton Baseball, came to the Parks meeting, uh, to, uh, express his appreciation to council and Parks Commission, uh, for not only getting it done, but getting it done as quickly as they did. So, we'll continue to look at other ideas there, some swing sets, we've got ideas for a really extensive handicap playground, um, walking trail, et cetera, so, uh, we're, we're working on that, happy about that. Um, I met with, uh, we met with, uh, Chief Bickett, myself, Sergeant, uh, Zan Pelling, who attends Clinton's council days, met with the new mayor of, uh, Clinton, Bud McFadden, McDaniel, that's what I said. That's right. McFadden, good, uh, God bless him, uh, any really, really good guy. Uh, the mayor of Clinton, Clarissa Legra, moved to Green, so she had to give up her seat, he is the new mayor, um, Kent, uh, Crowe, I think?
Coach.
That's what I said, coach. Uh, he is their new council president, so they came up and met with us to talk about the Clinton policing contract, uh, which we've had with them since, for any number of years. Uh, they were very complimentary about the level of service that was being provided. Um, they are very much interested in extending that contract, which expires at the end of this year. Um, they get the same money crunch as everybody else, but, uh, we talked about some figures which will be an increase, uh, but it's also helpful to us in terms of, uh, you know, helping to fund and finance what we do, so we expect to get a response from them, I, I told them that we probably want three readings on that and, uh, um, I asked them to have a response to us by mid-October, uh, and we can reach a number that both sides are comfortable with and then we'll bring that to you, I think he'll have to bring it to their council as well, but as of right now, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to continue providing that service and, and have that additional revenue source. And let me see, we have two, uh, these four, and two new reserve police officers, which is a really big deal because it's so hard to find police officers and to find, uh, the part-time officers. Uh, Daniel Kolsart, who had a number of years of law enforcement experience already in, uh, Oakwood Village and also in the city of Dover, and Van Wall Brown, who, uh, not too many years ago was here, uh, with, uh, for the Manchester High School senior volunteers. Uh, and I, at the time, he seemed like a nice young man, and he's done in law enforcement, he's, uh, has his commission, uh, he was working, I think, at, uh, at one of the colleges up in Cleveland, and so he's come on board too, so we're really happy to have those gentlemen, uh, to supplement our platinum police officers. And finally, uh, Amber Crowe, who is doing a really nice job on our BZA, um, is also a magistrate in Seminole County, uh, she's also a candidate for office right now, uh, part of appeals, and she's a lifetime resident graduate from the school, just a great lady, the kind of person we want to get involved here, uh, but she learned in, uh, during her election that, uh, talking to high ethics, that they felt that as a magistrate, it would be inappropriate for her to sit on board, so she reluctantly, uh, submitted her resignation, uh, indicated that in the future, as soon as she is able, she will continue to be involved out here. Uh, so we had that seat to fill, we have an alternate, uh, Nick Elekowitz, who's a great guy and a great talent, uh, we reached out to him, uh, to see if he was interested in, in stepping up to the full-time spot, uh, we did not, uh, we, we didn't hear back from him on that, and it's been three, four weeks, uh, and, uh, very good job trying to reach him. And then we also, initially, we said, well, we're gonna fill that alternate spot, and I said, gosh, we have a community that's, uh, have a wide range of experience and, and indicated a willingness to be involved, and, uh, and lo and behold, Mike Conwell had the, uh, his fortunes blundered in me, and I said, would you? And he said, yes, I would. Uh, he thought that he was, uh, being considered as the alternate, and I advised him tonight that he's being considered as the, uh, as a full-time member, and I understand you are, you are willing to accept that?
Yes.
All right. So, when I, I, I will ask, um, the, uh, for a motion to approve, uh, the mayor's appointment of Michael Conwell to, uh, the, uh, BZA seat, uh, that, uh, is open due to Amber Crowe's resignation, and that is a seat that will run through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five, I need a motion.
So moved.
So second.
Kelly, we have a first and a second.
Mr. Cott?
Sure.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Kind of making light, but we really appreciate it, that's, you know, and, you know, I'll, I'll say this, and I, I, I got nothing after this, but, um, we're really seeing, um, just what we want to see is, is more and more community involvement, uh, and, uh, I mean, I think the people that stepped up that, that got involved with the steering committee, the people that volunteered to be on the steering committee, we didn't have enough seats for everybody, uh, you know, this type of, uh, community involvement, that's, uh, it's really a good sign, I think, for the community, so we really appreciate the willingness to serve, that's all I got.
Susan, why not?
You left me a couple to say.
Imagine that, I said intentionally, leave you a couple.
Um, well, one thing is, uh, for those of you who came to our auction, um, we didn't have a turnout that we wish we could, whatever, but we did gross about, uh, fifty-one dollars, fifty-one thou, oh, gosh.
Five thousand?
Five thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars gross.
That was the first number of fifty-one.
Yeah. Fifty-one eighty-eight, how about that? So, um, that's the gross. Obviously, we, we were able to get rid of a lot of things that we wanted to and at least get some money out of them, and that is split up into the departments where those, uh, where those items came from, so those departments received those funds back. So, just wanted to update you on that. Um, also, you've received emails that the budget meetings are going to start on October fifth and sixth for the two thousand twenty-three budget, um, and I believe you got certified, uh, estimated resources, certificate of estimated resources, so, um, I know the mayor invited anybody that could, uh, come to those meetings to, of you guys to come, so just wanted to kind of update that process is starting. Um, we're hoping to have the draft to you by first meeting in November, so that'll give you plenty of time to take, take a look at it, if you don't pass it on first time, um, so we're hoping everything will go smoothly, and, uh, as you know, it's estimated, um, what our carryover will be, unlike doing it, uh, in the year, um, so we'll probably have to make a little bit more adjustments than we, than we normally do in two thousand twenty-three, so just kind of be aware of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Susan. Jack, my cast over comprehensive plan committee, do you have a report?
Well, I'd, I'd rather Mr. Conwell give that report kind of straight, he's a little more in the, in the know, I must remember, uh, in the lead.
We're in the works of creating our next meeting, um, so that we can get this, we don't want to stall, slow the process down. Our next meeting will cover the resolution for the season, then our goal is just to push it out and put out really fundamental issues in our marketing. I know it's your concern to make sure we get a lot of information out there, uh, Mr. Cott, so we will do anything we can possibly to market at the lowest cost, we can even try to figure out a way to do it inside on here, or, you know, but at the end of the day, I appreciate all of you, and it is very important that we get as much participation as anything possible, and folks here, if you know of this, continue to bring it up to your neighbors and keep in the conversation. It's important that we can have enough data so we can make the recommendations, and I thought, I pointed out that our recommendations for councils to work with, and the stronger their information, the better the data, the better the choice is, so, the terms are important, reach down and get in contact with them. So, we're gonna, I'll reach out to our, uh, to Lord tomorrow and stay right back to the end of the schedule, so we can, like, thank you for, for that, which is what I'm really doing.
Anyone have any old business? Nobody? New business?
Uh, wanted to talk about the noise issue.
And I have a letter here. Would you like for me to read this, or would you like to read this? Are you okay with that, Heather? First, I would like to thank you both listening to our concern about our personal issue with the Tudor House noise disturbance. Your concern with this matter was deeply appreciated. Please accept this as a colonal complaint in regards to the noise coming from the Tudor House of Desks. As we talk, my husband and I recently moved to the Pinot Point area. We are not able to enjoy peace and quiet in our own backyard. The music and crowd noise is unacceptable and disrespectful to the neighborhood, to say the least. Numerous evenings, we have had to go inside because we cannot even have a family conversation due to the noise. Each evening, we look to see if there's going to be an event, even have a fam, frustrate to, I'm sorry, I lost my train, sorry. Each evening, we look to see if there's going to be an event, frustrated with the fact that this will determine our evening in our backyard. Not only does this determine our evening, but also our sleep. We go to bed with the bass of the music thumping through our homes several nights through the weekdays and weekend. Never did we think moving to the lake, we would have to fight for peace and quiet. We are pleading for a solution. Perhaps it would be enclosed, perhaps it could be enclosed to contain the noise to the party it's being rented to. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and it's signed by Dugger and Amber Briggs, who are here today. And they live right down, about four houses down?
They live right next to Al.
Right next to Al, both.
And, and we, we have received, um, I think there's been maybe five formal complaints over the summer, um, and then it was communicated, uh, Tim Cantor from, uh, the management company has done a good job of, of keeping me advised when calls come in, sometimes the calls just come in directly to the Tudor House phone. So, became aware of it, uh, I've met with Tim, met with him last week, um, discussed the, uh, the, the issues and problems, um, started to talk about, uh, ways to, to try to remedy that, and, and there's, I don't want to speak for him in that regard, there's, uh, I, I know that initially, one of the plans was to, to buffer it with some more tree lines, but the landscaping didn't permit that yet, so there's that. So, uh, I have him come back in again next week, and we're gonna continue to work on it and try to come up with a solution that, uh, that, you know, we don't want to, uh, we don't want the enjoyment that's, you know, that, that, that the community's enjoying over there with that facility to be at the price of somebody else's discomfort, so, uh, I'll keep council advised of, uh, you know, of, of what measures we're gonna take a shot at. I know they've, you know, it, there's, like, there's decimal readings and those kind of things, and they tell part of the story, I guess, and this has, I've had several conversations with the officers who have worked there, uh, and, uh, oftentimes what we're seeking is, Uh, and, uh, oftentimes, we're seeing, it's, at least it's been communicated to me, is decimal readings that are under a thousand. And, uh, and yet still concerned with the other side that, hey, you know, that may be what the reading says, but I can still hear it in my front yard. Um, so, uh, we're, we're aware of it, we're working on it, trying to be sensitive to it and keep you advised of everything we can do.
And Paul, you live down in that area too?
Yeah, I do. I, I'm a, I'm about two blocks away. It's, um, I, I have not walked down to Pin Oak to, uh, during an event, you know, I, I will do that. I meant to do it last year and I just forgot.
I understand.
It's, um, I, I will tell you, not to, I don't want to throw any money under the bus, but, uh, you know, usually on, on Sundays, um, if I enjoy, uh, the music at Danos, I don't have to walk to Danos. Uh, I hear it in my backyard, you know? We, it's, it's, part of it is, is, you know, entertaining. We're at the Portis Lakes and it's the lakes that the folks at the upper deck have, have lived with us for a long time. And we've tried to do, you know, to do what we can for those folks as well. So we're not turning a blind eye to it. Um, but we'll continue to, to try to find, uh, some ways to, uh, to soften that and address it, whether it's panels or sound panels or whatever.
Will there be ways for us to get a list of the next, let's say, four or five upcoming events there where we could potentially go to the neighborhoods or something?
Yeah, sure.
Just kind of get an idea of what it sounds like?
Well, I think they're posted on the, uh, website, but yeah, we'll do that. I'll have, uh...
So the, the weddings are posted on the website?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
From what I understand, it sounds like it's more of a wedding-type events that are...
All right, why don't I do that? I'll, I'll make sure we get a schedule for council.
Okay.
And I'm not speaking for Kevin, but I think I am. If you would give one of us a call, we would even drive down, depending on what I'm doing at the time of course. You know, I, I might say, no, I might not hold something. But if you would call us, we would drive down even. But that is something that you can't tell when it's gonna happen.
I think us experiencing it goes a long way too, just to see what the impact is. I know we had the same issue in West Caston with the, the gas levels out. And so somebody reached out and tried one out there and listened to it. And I wasn't on council, but, wow, so that's when we brought it to your attention, so.
Dugger, you hit something.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's an old folks home right next door to this location. So you brought up the upper deck, and that's been a bar forever. The Tudor House hasn't been a, a bar. We're not talking noise or enjoyable, we're talking, uh, wedding reception. You've had police called out there with multiple, you had the sheriff's department out there. I mean, we were right there when they were fighting. I mean, this isn't, this isn't good for you, Franklin.
We had one incident, I mean, there was one incident this summer that you referred to.
Okay.
Um, that the police had to be called. We haven't received any complaints from St. Luke's, uh, who were, have halfway between the Tudor House and, and Pin Oak, so...
So you got old people that are there getting taken care of that have no, no voice?
Oh, I mean, the staff hasn't called us either. We haven't heard anything from the staff. We communicate pretty regularly with that staff. That's never, ever been raised as an issue. The Tudor House, I mean, the Tudor House has always been an event venue.
Correct.
In fact, those, the, the tent and all used to be actually closer to the property line than it is now where they would hold the events. And the, uh, so, uh, I mean, it's always been that venue. It's a little more busy now than it has been. But it, it, it's, it's been booked on Friday and Saturday nights throughout the summer for the last several years, there have been wedding receptions out there. That's not new. I will tell you, there have been times in the past, and I'm really not trying to take a side on this thing, where I could hear that Tudor House music at my house. I'm, uh, you know, it's, I'm like two streets removed, you know, from where you guys are. And I, I have, I had that experience, um, this summer where I could hear it from there. Uh, I'm not trying to be insensitive to it.
Right.
It's always been there. Uh, and, and occasionally, we've had some problems, you know, some complaints about noise. Um, uh, so it's not, this isn't brand new that we're having events at the Tudor House. What is, I would say, new is that some weeknights. And, and we didn't, we really didn't have events during the week out there. Now, it, you know, the intention is to cut off the music at nine P M. on the weeknights, ten P M. on the weekends. Uh, I think they've been, they've been diligent about that. So...
Yeah, they do cut it off at ten P M. I'll say that. But as somebody gets up at four o'clock in the morning, um, ten P M. is just too late for me, so...
Well, I meant sincerely, can Paul, I will drive out, all kidding, so...
Yeah, so I don't know how close the events were to the water pre, in previous years, but this year, they're right there.
I, I noticed something in, in a boat, and I brought it up at a couple meetings because I would be out on a boat with some friends and we'd be heading toward Danos. So you come around the point, see there's an event there.
Yeah.
So we turned the stereo off on the boat and started going up to it. And I always ask, tell me when you guys can hear the music? Because I met with Tim and he explained how he reversed the sound and...
Right.
Did, he, he's, he's apparently a trained sound engineer. So he did some effort to, and it seemed to work to me. Your letter brought up a valid point, though. As we're going across the lake, we couldn't hear the music, but we could hear the people. And that may be just a bit of a different challenge that's gotta be dealt with, that, you know, the sound engineer doesn't tune up the people. So, uh, you know, I, I think it may be something that was an oversight, uh, that we gotta be aware of.
Do you feel it is the people in retrospect, or do you think, you think it's the music?
So the music gets louder as the night goes along, so...
Well, that's what I was hearing.
I don't know what time you went by. If you went by at seven, it's kind of mild because people are still eating and, and talking, but by night...
No, it was late. It was, it was the middle of the summer. It was pitch black dark. I don't know that, so it, it hadn't been well after the lake, I would have thought.
Anything. That's anything, though. Like, you live there. I don't live there.
Right. I, I'm just, I'm just sharing the one experience that I...
Okay. We're gonna work on it. We're gonna work on it.
I, I'd like to say, I'd like for us to, uh, uh, take this slowly. Uh, we, we've had issues in the past where we've had, uh, a couple complaints come up about something. And then we're all gone ho to, uh, well, we gotta fix something, we gotta check. But we really haven't had complaints from, um, across the lake or anything like that. It's an event center, as Paul mentioned. It's been there for a long time. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate that you weren't aware that there was an event center next to your house.
Well, I'm a Manchester resident, lifelong Manchester resident. I knew it was an event center.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
Okay.
What else did you have to say?
I'm, I'm a lifelong resident of New Franklin.
Okay. So you, you moved to, next to an event center. There's going to be events there. There's going to be music. Uh, there's going to be people talking. Uh, the ordinance is to shut it off at ten o'clock, which they are going. Uh, I understand you have to get up at four o'clock. I get up at five o'clock. Uh, we all have things that we have to deal with. But for us to start getting involved, overly involved in something, uh, without having a lot of information, uh, just because we've received a couple complaints. Uh, I just want to make sure that we're, we're taking our time with it. We, we had the issue with the, uh, with the gun range where we had one person come in and had some complaints. And we went wild with that. Uh, hopefully, we've learned from that that we need it. When we get a complaint about something, let's take our time, let's review it properly, and let's not, uh, uh, just jump because, uh, one or two citizens are, are not happy with the situation that benefits the entire city of New Franklin.
I don't think I've heard anybody have any rash, um, decisions.
And I think, I think Tim even said that he would address it. Am I right, Paul? You've already addressed it with him.
Okay.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any?
Well, I almost want to do this in New, but just like, keep in with your theme of mentioning utilities.
Yes, I would.
So since my background in utilities, I've heard I've started with some of the water complaints.
Love it.
I started at the south end of Manchester Road. I started with Manchester Salt. So I, I spoke with the individual there, uh, with the business owner, Jim Strike. Uh, Jim is actually a, uh, third-generation business owner, if you will. His, his grandfather started the business. It was called Hyden Sons. And his, his father worked with, with him. And, uh, for their business, it's just a run. Uh, Jim took over the business when his, his father stepped down. And, uh, his daughter's actually working, which is a fourth generation. Uh, they are, their current location, they started building the building in nineteen eighty-eight, and they did the move-in on nineteen ninety. Uh, they offer, uh, a host of, uh, services there. So they offer water delivery, they offer, they offer softener and ice control salt delivery, and they also sell the salt, uh, water conditioning and, uh, well and pump service. So, uh, I mean, they're kind of one-stop shop for your water needs out here, if you're not tied onto the city water line. Additionally, Jim retired from the township, uh, prior to us becoming the city. And Jim and his wife both had, had many years of volunteering at the Tudor House. So I just wanted to talk a little about Manchester Salt. Next time, it'll probably be Mr. Dependable and then a few levels after that.
Okay, that sounds great. And I think, I always buy my water. We get those, uh, five gallon containers down at Jim's. All the time. That's for my coffee. But they are nice containers. Do you not, yeah?
I get, I get salt.
Ask him about the water. He'll know, he'll tell him the water that he sold me on because he convinced me to get it. Randy wanted distilled water. And this is something different. It's really great for coffee. I have to say that.
Since you told me our service department gets a bottle of water from there.
I'm betting they do. I mean, a lot of people, and they always brought my salt and took it downstairs. I'm not sure if they do that anymore, though.
They, they still do that.
Do they still take it downstairs? Because that's kind of a lifesaver for most of us. We can't handle those bags. And it's nice to get like a big, big thing, what do you, flat? That's not what you call it. Is it called a flat when you buy that big thing of it and they bring it in? Like a pallet? A pallet. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, I want to talk about B and B and Sons Incorporated. And most of us know it by Jeff England. Jeff does work up here. His mom and dad started the company in nineteen eighty-seven. Thirty-five years, family-owned. Now it's Jeff, his brother Kevin, and his wife Sheila that run it, and their sons Nick and Jacob. And family-owned, very dependable, small business ideals. And the phone number is three, three, zero, eight, eight, two, five, one, zero, zero. Really great for heating and air conditioning. Excellent. You do use them up to the line?
I use them here. I use them as well.
Tudor House?
Uh-huh.
Almost like, um, Dave Portis. You're just like a staple. And I'd love to mention somebody new. It's, um, someone that we had talked about at the meeting. It's called Wednesday's Child. And they center on helping, um, underprivileged children predominantly. And I think it's one of the best people that we could sponsor in this community. Um, they're located fifty-five eleven Manchester Road in New Franklin. Their focus is strictly on the children. You can donate money, gently-use clothing, especially right now with kids coming back to school. They need that. And you know what? I think I have a phone number, but I'm not sure it's on here. Three, three, zero, eight, one, four, five, one, two, one. So I would highly recommend them also. Does anybody else have anything under, or, was that new business or old business?
New business.
No one else has anything else? Our next scheduled meeting is going to be...
Public, public comments.
Oh, public comments. Does anyone have anything to say from the public? Thank you.
Before I lose my nerve, I have to... I just want to say, I was really happy to see the survey thing pass as far as the mailing. Um, it's something that crossed my mind because I understand exactly what Mr. Cotts is saying as far as we live in a digital age and, uh, spend the money to have something printed and mailed. But, you know, I also, this just is how I feel. There's no way to know. I think if you get a postcard in the mail talking about a survey, you might feel like, mm, you know, who knows? And put it aside. But if you get it in front of you and look through it, you might say, yeah, this is pretty important stuff. I want to be a part of this. And then they may go online and do it. So then we save the postage of having that returned, but it helped us maybe to get more response. I don't know. It's just a thought.
I agree with you. I, I think it was an important thing because we don't realize, if you talk to people, you don't realize how many people do not use the computer at all. You really don't. Until you start talking to people, you'll even have people say, well, would you do this for me? They'll, they'll fall and say, would you do this for me because I don't have a computer? And I always say, when you go to the libraries, they always say, well, they make me feel dumb because they get me on it, but I don't know where to go from there. And that's true. Think about when you first started using a computer. You felt dumb because you got on it, but then what do you do?
I still feel dumb.
I do too, every day. If, if at least once a day, I feel dumb. I have to. It's not Judy Jones. But I'm saying to you, I think it is a good point. And I think David brought that point up, that it's really good to hit everyone. And I know it's costly. And I agree with Tim on that. It costs a lot of money to do that. But everybody needs to be heard. Everybody has the right to speak, whether you want to hear it or not. Everybody did. Yeah?
I'll add one more comment to that.
Only one?
Just one, and it's great. Uh, I know Mr. Cotts is an environmentalist and doesn't like to see paper being wasted, which is part of, was some of your concern. Hopefully, you offset that. The solar array that I put up in twenty-four, twenty-fifteen has saved sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five trees from being cut down since it was put up. So hopefully that, that offset that a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Paul, is there a recent report in executive session with them?
Oh, she did, sorry. Thank you.
Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cotts?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
I do.
Oh. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And our next meeting is going to be October fifth at six o'clock. And I expect a call from you kids.
We need to have a survey committee meeting sometime in the near future just so we can shoot down and finalize, uh, what other data do we want to capture maybe? On the Survey Monkey side, just to finalize the format. So we go to the data source, we say, maybe it's an exact rose in column. Uh, I'm playing for that. We're looking at the product from the survey from the paper side. But she's got to go about it now. We have a column for, and I think it's, uh, that we, uh, we're in the final data set. We have some loads of, um, here's the name and file potentials. And if we sort it back on this column, we input it to the data set we believe, and it goes back in the exact same order so that you can, uh, compare it and get...